All right. Well, good evening, everybody, and welcome to the candidate forum for the school committee role that's open at this upcoming election. I want to welcome Catherine Marshall and Jed.
You'll have to help.
Mehegan.
Mehegan. As candidates, and I both congratulate you, congratulated the both of you for stepping forward and and taking on this this challenge, and we wish you both best of luck. So.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So the ground rules and the format is basically is a question and answer. And there may be a follow up question or not, but we'll go backwards and forwards and we'll ask the same questions and in turn seek a reply. And so we anticipate roughly about forty, forty five minutes for that process. Have an opportunity at the end for closing remarks and any questions that may come via Zoom or from the audience. I think what's really good is I think we these forums, we get better and better at it in terms of organizing it. You both have the questions beforehand, so I think that's better than throwing them out their calls, so to speak. So it gives you the time to do a bit of thinking about it, and I think hopefully be able to kind of share in a much deeper way, the replies to these questions. I think that will be helpful for the folks in the room and listening to the Zoom to kind of, you know, basically think who is the better candidate. I suppose that's what the hopefully the objective of this this forum is. Anyway, so what I'll do is I'll let Catherine go first.
Yes.
All right. And so the first question is, yeah, so why are you running for the election to the school committee? And what are your priorities?
Sure. Thanks Fernando, and I did take the time to really go through these questions and come up with thoughtful answers. So I have notes, full disclosure.
Wonderful.
I hope that's okay.
No, no. I think for me, it's all about being prepared and yeah, no, no, it's perfect.
Okay. Good. So I thought quite honestly, long and hard about running for school committee because I understand it is not an easy task or necessarily one that is light on time, right? So I've lived in Duxbury for over ten years and like most, I moved here for the beach and for the schools. I'm running for school committee because of my interest in delivering the equitable access to achieve personal and academic excellence for all of Duxbury students. As a former elementary school teacher and current financial professional, I bring a wealth of knowledge, leadership skills and an energetic can do attitude to the school committee. I'm a parent, aunt and cousin of children currently attending Duxbury Public Schools, and I'm committed to helping ensure the Duxbury School System continues to be a place families want their children to go to school. My priorities are improving communication and transparency, not only within the school committee, but with the administration, families and the greater community. Building trust and productively engaging the community will help us through the decisions for the upcoming budget year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very thoughtful. Right.
Yeah, sure. So I am a I'm a child psychologist and I have been for more than thirty years. Before that, I was a teacher. I taught at the high school level. I taught at the junior high level and I taught at the college level. So and then I've been an administrator. I administered the psychological services for the children of American military and diplomatic personnel in Europe for the Department of Defense. So I have a sort of a wide variety of the kinds of experience and training that I think are relevant to the to the questions that come in front of of school committees. So that's the sort of background. I was married in Duxbury in nineteen eighty one. My wife went to Duxbury High School and I brought up my kids here in town. When I when my kids were young, I was I did all the stuff that probably a lot of the parents. I coached sports teams and youth sports teams, and I was scout leader for Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts. I was actually the scout master in town for five years. So and this is sort of circling back to this has been a great town to live in, great town to bring my kids up in. And so this is a way to give back to the town at this point. I come to the table with no priorities in particular. That is to say, I come to the table with with the intent to bring a sort of a a quiet, calm voice to whatever issues come before the school committee.
I think it's clear both of you have the experience of background to be able to perform your roles. That's great, and I think it's going to be a difficult choice for folks as as they go to vote. So it's very clear. So the role of the school committee. So Jed, we'd like to better understand your thoughts on the role of the school committee. What do you see the key as the key functions of the school committee? And how do you see the relationship between the school committee and the superintendent?
Sure. So the role of the school committee is actually delineated by law in the state of Massachusetts. So and so I'll just quickly run through for people who aren't aware of that. The to review educational goals and policies with reference to the standards, to review and oversee the budget, to appoint the superintendent, to act as the employer for collective bargaining, to adopt a PD plan for all principals and to advocate for the schools in the community.
Right.
So those are the stated goals. Save you a little time. And and I subscribe to all those goals. They all they all make sense to me, and I'm supportive of all those goals. As regards the relationship with the superintendent.
Yes.
So the school committee is in some senses, the I think of it sort of systemically as the board of directors with the with the superintendent sort of being the CEO, the executive officer who then takes the they takes for the curricula and the plans and executes them in the schools. There is something of a tension, a natural tension between the role of the school committee and the superintendent, because we have higher firepower. So but I don't think that has to be an adversarial sense. I don't think there's there is or should be an adversarial sense between the school committee and the and the superintendent. I suppose I think it ought to be a synergistic role. We have exactly the same goals.
Right. Great. I do have a follow on question, and it is because you've explained the the role of the school committee is setting policy. You're the employer of you find employer for collective bargaining, you affect the budget. And obviously, my understanding is that that your spouse is a teacher.
Yes.
At the Dr. Pre College School. So it does give to an appearance that.
Yeah.
That's a conflict of interest.
So let's address that question directly.
I think, yeah, I'd like to understand. You have to address it, right?
So I'm happy to. I'm happy to. So for anybody who doesn't know, my wife is the K through twelve curriculum supervisor. She's a non-union employee. So as far as the collecting.
Oh, that's good.
That's a that's not an issue. People who have been around the town long enough may know, may remember John Hindstad, who was on the school committee for years and was the chairman of the school committee. His wife worked at schools. So there is there is precedent for this happening.
Okay.
I but there was also there are also mechanisms by which you could seek recusal if I felt that there was an issue that where I can't really imagine what one would be. But let's imagine that there were one. The answer to how it would be handled is ethically.
Ethically, and recuse yourself if you felt in there.
Sure.
It's gonna be it's just gonna be tricky, right?
It's a perfectly reasonable question. It's it. This is a small community.
Yep.
So we have crossovers in all on every board. There are issues that come up. We are involved in lots of different ways. Catherine's involved in lots of different committees.
Yeah.
You know, these we have involvements in multiple things. When when issues come up, you handle the method.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you. So the role of the school committee, I think it's later clearly laid out in Mass General Law. Right. Is there anything else that you might might share? It may be especially with with, I think, there's a bit around there is is around with your the the interaction of the school committee and the superintendent.
Yes, exactly. That's where I was gonna go.
Right.
So first, you know, I'll pull something that I found from Desi, which they state that communication is the centerpiece of effective of effective school committee superintendent relationships.
Right.
And is the foundation that will nurture a climate conducive to growth. So kind of building onto that thought process, I do believe that the school committee must work as a team with the superintendent, who is our educational leader and advisor to the school system. But I liked your term of higher fire power, you know, keeping that in mind, there can be some animosity. So the board must strike a delicate balance between being responsive to the Duxbury community at large and stakeholders, but also working in harmonious, productive manner with the administration. So my ability to communicate and collaborate with people, both personally and professionally, I think will serve this school committee board well in a way that will enhance that.
All right. Great.
Relationship.
Excellent. Thank you. All right. Next question is building on that, community engagement. So Jed. So as a school committee member, you need to consider the viewpoints of various stakeholders when establishing goals and policies for our district. As a school committee member, how do you stay engaged with teachers, students and parents as well as the community at large?
Yeah. So this question and the next question are sort of opposite sides of exactly the same question. So we'll see.
There's some context in there. I think there was a correct me if I'm right, that there was a a piece where the where a member of the school committee was out there communicating, right? And and you had to make sure that it was done collectively. So there is.
That's a slightly different.
There's maybe just the clarity, right?
I hear you.
There's there's five of you, right?
Yes.
How do you, again, you know, there's two sides, but how do you then maybe the trick is how do you communicate as as one?
So let's come back to that question in a second. If we're talking now about the role issue.
Yep.
So the the role of communication is, as Catherine cited, you know, absolutely central to the to the position of a of a school committee. And it is a bidirectional role, which is to say, you need to be in touch with what's happening at the schools, with the students, with the teachers, with admin, and you need to be listening to what they're saying and taking that to that then flows through you to the outer community. And when I say the outer community, I don't only mean the community of parents. We're well aware of the fact that we ask for our funding from the entire community, not only the not only the members of the community that have children in the schools.
Yeah.
So you have to. So you take it from all the in-school stakeholders, absorb it, listen, bring that to the outside and do the same thing in reverse. You are listening and cooperating and and transmitting that information again through you and and to the schools at large. So I think there's a very critical, bidirectional listening and expressing to do. How you do that is, I think, happens at two levels. At one level, you have to be the kind of person that people trust.
Right.
So you have to establish personal relationships with people. And on the other hand, it has to be systemic. You have to be there. You have to walk into the schools. You have to be willing to to meet with the people, talk with the people, go into the senior center, talk with the stakeholders who might be quasi adversarial or have a different opinion about how money is spent in their town. But that's okay. You have to be okay sitting down with them and you have to.
Right.
You have to. Now, to get back to the question that you asked, you are correct in saying that when one expresses, when as a member of the school committee, when one expresses one's opinion, one has to be very careful about differentiating what is a personal opinion and what is a dictum from the school committee.
Yeah.
Yeah, you can't. You yeah, it's a mistake to represent yourself. And yet, and yet, as a school committee member, people will make the working assumption that what you're saying is a statement by the school committee, but it isn't, dollars.
Yeah. Okay, fair enough. But Catherine, the same question.
Okay, I think it was a two-part question, but I'm gonna go.
Just go with.
First part, yeah. So the various viewpoints of the stakeholders. So I don't think I summarize what I do for work, but I work in customer service. I work for insurance broker called Marsh, and I am a senior client advisor in that group, advising Fortune five hundred companies on their directors and officers insurance. So as a part of what we do in our company, it's called the power of perspective. And what we are doing is to better serve our clients. We are working with our multiple businesses and various stakeholders of our own company to bring data analytics, information to our clients so that they are informed to be able to make decisions. And I kind of relate that to being a school committee because you need to take all the different facets of town. It's to your point, not just the parents or the students or teachers. It's the greater community at large who funds our schools. And so I think that as a school committee member, I view the teacher, student, staff and parents community as these clients and want to engage them to reinforce our mission.
And then the second part is then, how do you then, as a school committee and as a as a person, how then do you do you kind of?
Do that.
Do that as a yeah, you have a responsibility to communicate, but also to to share with the community the the achievement challenges that the committee and the schools are facing.
Sure. So I think it's important to be able to compartmentalize, right? I am a parent in the school system, and so I have personal parent feelings about
of interest.
My children's experience here or my nieces and my nephews and my cousins, et cetera. But, you know, I am able to take emotion out of a situation, even if it does relate to my family. Sometimes I say I don't have enough emotion with things, so that's something I'm working on. But, you know, I think that's important as a school committee representative for the town to be able to present these issues in a, you know, unemotional, compartmentalized, rational manner, supported by data and analytics. And one thing I would add to that, that I think we can improve in addition to, you know, I know that there's office hours are being done. Currently, we put out the school committee videos, the
Right.
School committee meetings are all publicized and that's that's all very, I think, well received and should continue. But I think we stand to have additional communication by way of like a seasonal newsletter call. I don't want to call it so corporate quarterly, but like a back to school. Here are the open item school committee handled over the last three months, they're closed. And here's what we have open because it seems to me the feedback from the community is oftentimes information the school committee has, but it's just not available in a in a concrete, you know, expected way. And I think that cadence would really calm, you know, to your point, calming, calm some of the issues that have come up.
I think there's, yeah, you cannot over communicate.
Yeah.
On on issues that are very close to people's people's hearts. Exactly. So kind of building on that, communicating. So budget challenge. I think it's very, very clear that this, based on the information that we have right now, I think this fiscal year, fiscal year twenty five is basically we've topped out, right? The cost to provide services for this town, or should be schools, a big part of it, has has reached the 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 income level, right?
Is the message you gave us.
That's right. There's no more money left, right? So, yeah, we've got to sit as a community and figure out how we're going to basically provide the services and and how we're going to manage it that and the competition that that comes with it. So what what are? What are you gonna do then, if so elected, in pursuit of the funding as a as a member of the school committee? So I'll I'll hand over to you first, Jed, to talk about that. How are you gonna go ahead and convince the community that that the schools is is the right is the right priority?
You know, you're you're asking the question in exactly the right fashion, because that's what it is.
Yeah.
You so as a as a fiscal entity, our community is something like ninety seven percent funded by property taxes.
That's correct.
And now the figure that I heard, and you might be able to correct me on this, is that some seventy percent of the of the of the houses in town don't have children in the school system.
That I don't. That's a good point. I don't know that.
That's the number that I was told. So so I don't need to say anymore to 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 clarify how difficult this situation that is. Because the the way that you made that point is the correct way to look at it. We must represent. The people who are here, no doubt, and the people listening, are probably the people invested in this.
Correct.
Right? That's preaching to the choir.
Yeah.
So we don't need to convince people who have children in the schools that we need excellent schools in this community. But I think it is a fundamental seminal role of the of the of the school committee to to, I don't want to say sell the notion because it sounds mercantile, to 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 believe and to bring to the community at large that there is nothing more important, that we belong that high on the on the priority list, that that all of us, whether or not we have, I don't have children in the school system now.
Yeah.
But but all of us, including those who don't have children in the school system, need to buy into the concept that there is nothing more important to our community and to our society than to have a well educated populace and that this belongs at the top of the priorities list. There may be other discussions about the difficulties of a community that's ninety seven percent residential in its in its revenue source. But those are different questions. No matter how we look at this, it is a hugely important job to say to everyone in the community, you want this. This is, we want to be a community. We don't, I'm not gonna phrase it that way. I'll simply say, we want to be a community that has excellent schools. You want to be the kindest of community that where young families move in and bring up their children. You want excellent schools.
Okay.
You said that before when you when you said that's one of the reasons I came to this, I came to the town.
Right.
It's because of.
That's what we want.
That's where you're at, yeah.
Right.
All right. There's there's applause from the audience. That's really good. Excellent.
It's my mark.
So if you don't mind, I'm gonna, I still, let me see. You know, I'm gonna ask you a follow up question, if that's okay, right? So I as a as a ex-member of the finance committee and obviously as a member of the select board, I want to be able to stand up in front of the community and say, yes, the priorities are the the school is where we need to invest. And I want to be able to describe why, right? So so how would you go about convincing, right? So the the question is, and I use metrics, right? I come from a from a background is what, you know, what gets measured gets done. Basically, if you're doing well, then the metric, then then performance shows itself. Areas where performance doesn't doesn't do well, then you have a metric to be able to say, if I spend more, if I do more, I will improve performance. A balanced scorecard, for want of a better better word. There has been discussions and it has been voted on the the school committee that they're going to proceed along with a balanced scorecard. What are your thoughts about that? I think it's pretty positive that a good way of demonstrating why we should be investing in the schools, because if there's any gap or or need, then we can clearly articulate it with numbers that people can get get behind.
Yeah, I understand your opinion. I disagree.
Oh, wonderful.
I I think that the balanced scorecard is just, I think what most of what makes education in general and our schools in particular valuable are things that for which there are no metrics.
Right.
Things like relationships between, everybody's trying to add metrics to things like medicine and to things like and to things like education.
Yeah.
Nobody thinks the medical care they're getting now is is better than it was ten years ago. Right? The answering says the, you know, the phone tree might be better, but but you're not getting it. When you try to apply metrics, and I've said this, and I said this in the school committee meeting.
Right, okay.
That you you, when you apply metrics that were invented to to increase profits at businesses, which is precisely what the balanced scorecard is. You systematically leave out everything special about about human interaction.
Right.
So I think that the that the sales pitch to to the community. Listen, if you if you watched the the school committee meeting last night, I hope some of you did. The the metrics were great. We don't need more metrics. They were. They were terrific. They were colorful. They were accurate. They were interesting. The Danielle said at the meeting last night, we could produce data dashboards and so we got all the metrics we need.
Right.
Another truckload of metrics isn't isn't gonna convince people who don't have children in the schools. They have to be convinced at a philosophical level.
All right. And that's that's fair enough.
I know there's there's people.
You know, I I just sometimes I see the US world news, news world report. There's always metrics. There's metrics in there.
US News and World Report.
Yeah.
Really.
No, 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 sorry.
Back to that later if we want. The US, the US News and World Report is a terrible metric, poorly constructed and only designed to sell newspapers.
You know what I like about this? The passion that you show. So thank you. We can continue.
Don't get me started on the US.
Lester's gonna shut us down here.
Gonna get the July.
Yeah. From Lester, impossible. But thank you for your passion. And I appreciate the the response, and I like I like the debate is always good.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right. And and I'm seeking to understand and just as you are. Same question.
And I.
In terms of the the, how are you gonna convince? How are you gonna convince that the residents, right, to to choose between maybe funding the the swimming pool, the library versus the schools?
Right. It's not just the schools that are in a very precarious situation.
Yeah. So there's competing, competing needs.
Yes. And I, you know, I I have not been an elected official in Duxbury yet. So there is an, you know, learning curve to understand exactly how those competing needs and the politics of all that works. I do know that it has been over twenty five years since any prop two and a half override has been approved. I don't know how many times it has been tried. I'm hoping we're gonna say zero, and this is the first time we're trying it in twenty five years. Because I I do think that that's the direction we need to go, based on everything that I've heard and read about our financial situation. In addition to doing exactly what you said, is just on a ground level, get convincing people that we need good citizens in this town. And actually, Sarah Maguire, the Duxbury Middle School principal, has communicated through her newsletters that one of her priorities of the Duxbury Middle School is to help create a good citizen. And to me, that is one of the most important things. I mean, my kids are over there, hopefully being
good citizens.
Created good citizens, listening, but you know, so so I really do firmly believe that's gonna be the way to do it. And and I respectfully agree, I think, with more of the balanced scorecard. And I do not believe in just throwing numbers around for throwing numbers around and having, you know, these teachers and administrators spend hours upon hours just recreating wheel. My understanding is it's not going to be
Right.
That type of work and at the stage we're at, I think, is it's an approval for a request for proposal. Or a request for quote, not proposal, yeah. Which to me means you get you get that back and then you make a decision on how to proceed forward. So I don't think we're at a a, you know, like a real debating point, to be honest with you. I agree with the fact that we should explore that. And then just two other quick points on this.
Sure.
Two other ways to get money from our community, unless we were to totally change the fabric of our community, which is to not have all the tax come from our residents. We could have staples in here, coals, you know, we could do that.
That's a different discussion for another day.
That's not gonna happen.
Yeah.
In certainly the three years that this school committee position is open. But I think, you know, we're certainly getting a lot less federal funds now post pandemic. And then the other thing is, I don't know what type of effort we put around grants, like actively seeking out grants that would be available to our schools, district and system, and that I didn't mention it before, but would be one of my priorities
Okay.
to explore that, because that's money we could use to help supplement the budget issue.
Good, good. Excellent. So I just final point on this, and it is not the last word, right? But I remember at one school meeting, a previous superintendent, Dr. Antonucci, showing his scorecard, which is basically money spent per teacher. And he put it out there. And then later on, the school committee, sorry, the schools coming in, the finance committee, then they moved around to showing basically dollars spent per child, right, as a as a metric. So I think there's there's something in there that we need to figure out. Now, if we if we already have metrics that show everything, I'd like to see them. And I think I would like to stand up and just go with this personally, as a select board member. If I if I would really like to support this, and if it makes sense, I want to be able to demonstrate that by doing this, by by supporting an override, we will achieve this, right? So I think there's something about being able, is a is a communication tool more than.
Listen, I I agree with you about the principle.
Right.
I don't agree with you that this is a good, that the balanced scorecard.
Okay.
The the balanced scorecard, it's been, it has been used in schools. It was designed for business. It has been used in schools, but it's been it's been used in schools that were vastly less good than our schools.
Good.
So the I I think that our, and I wouldn't mind the concept of of designing a metric ourselves that we felt was convincing to the community.
That's.
We need to spend tens of thousands of dollars to to bring in an outside consultant to come up with more numbers.
That's why we can save some money that way, right? There we go. I like that. So yeah, thank you for that. I mean, that was excellent. All right.
And by the way, I also will be with Catherine about the about the prop two and a half override. I see that in our future.
Right.
I think she's right.
And it's gonna be a really tough conversation.
I actually be good, right?
Yeah. Really tough conversation. Next question, and I can't remember. I think it's.
I think it's definitely.
Definitely, definitely.
Poor Jed's been taking them all first. I wasn't gonna stop it.
So special education, special education. So over the years, the school's special education program has been challenging both financially and programmatically. What's your estimation of the current special education program at our schools? And what should be done to improve it, if anything?
For. So this is, this is not an easy one.
No.
This is not an easy one, but approximately twenty percent of our school population participates in some sort of IEP program or receive services through our special education department. You know, I understand there are requirements the school system has to meet to comply with the state policies and laws, which I feel like you probably know more about than I do. But in addition to meeting these requirements, Duxbury has one of the best service to student ratios, meaning each special needs teacher or resource has a lower number of average students than the state. Really, we have one of the better ratios there. So overall, I do think the special education is serving the community's needs. I'm excited by the addition of the sped director, Teresa Skinner, who joined about a year ago, I think now. I've been really impressed with her communication style, right? It's so important.
Yep.
And also just the content of. Um, and also just the content of, of what she's delivering. And I think that the collaboration between CPAC committee, um, which is in, in town here, the administration, the school committee, um, and, and Teresa has improved really since she joined. Um, and I think the priority just needs to be making sure each child has, each child has the best opportunity for success um, with access to the proper resources, whether it be in an inclusive classroom, right? Or whether it's better suited for that student to be in a, you know, an individual classroom or a classroom dedicated just for special needs, um, students or in an off-site classroom, which is a service available as well.
Okay.
So overall, I think it's a, a good story, room for improvement. Is everyone happy?
Sure.
No, but.
Right.
I, I think we're on the right path, especially in the last year.
Excellent. Jed.
Yeah, I, I don't disagree with anything, uh, that, that you, that you just said. Uh, so I am, obviously, given what I do for a living, I am, I've had a lot of experience in, in the special ed, uh, uh, arena. Uh, I am, I'm a, I'm a clinical child psychologist. I've sat on, uh, both sides of the table. I've sat on the side of the table. Uh, when I was working for the Department of Defense in Europe, I was sat on the side that was, uh, what can the schools deliver? And in Massachusetts, in my practice back here, I've been on, on the advocacy side for parents. So I've been in dozens, dozens of IEP meetings. Uh, a- and, uh, I think, uh, if you're asking, so when you're talking about special ed in Massachusetts, you're talking about chapter seven sixty-six. And the essence of seven sixty-six is this, that you have, uh, you apply, that every child is entitled to a free and appropriate education in the least restrictive environment.
Okay.
Okay, so everybody knows what free means, although, although to the schools, it's not free.
No.
But, but setting that issue aside, uh, the other two are always contentious. Uh, what is the, what is the appropriate education and what is the least restrictive environment and how do you balance the two? They're difficult questions. If, if, if we're gonna try to step back, and I agree with what you say about, about the new sped director, I, I've, I've heard it talked in a, a dozen school committee meetings and I think she seemed competent and well put together and there is a new IEP system that is unfolding. They're being trained in that new IEP system in the schools right now.
IEP stands for?
Oh, Individualized, I said, uh, uh, Educational Plan.
Okay, good, all right.
So when, when, when a kid is, is determined to have special needs, they design individual plans.
Nice, okay.
Uh, for, for the kid. Uh, and there's, so there's a new IEP process this year with more involvement of the kids. I think it's great. Uh, but if you were gonna ask, how are we doing? I think you would have as many answers as you have kids and parents. And the, the, the fact of the matter is you would find some parents who are satisfied, you would some, find some parents who aren't.
Right.
Uh, I had never worked in a community where that wasn't the case. Uh, it's gonna be, uh, uh, it's, there's gonna be an issue of tension because there's always tension between what you would ideally like to do for a kid and what the school can do for the kid. And the minute you can't do something for the kid and you have to send them somewhere else to get it done, it's phenomenally expensive.
Sure.
So that's the both sides of the issue and, uh, I've, every school system I've ever worked in is doing its best to meet the needs of the, uh, to meet the needs of, of the, of the kids and to meet the budgetary needs. Uh, uh, Duxbury is no exception. I think we do our best. I think we're, I think we're, we're working at being as good as we can be, but I can guarantee you, there are some uh, special ed parents listening to this who say, yeah, my kid isn't getting what, what she needs.
Yeah, and that's a challenge, isn't it? Yeah. So how do you, how do you work on that? Um, I got so carried away with the budget question.
You missed one.
I missed it, I missed that question.
Uh oh.
And I thought, I, I had kindly, kindly, kindly remind, reminded it. No, it, it's, you know, there, there's a great relationship between the administration and, and the teachers and the union, uh, uh, union personnel that are that are working in the schools, right? However, I only, there's talk about privatizing the, uh, the, the school, the, the services of the, uh, school custodians. So if elected to the school committee, where do you stand on that?
Yeah, so I would take that one, sure. So I mean, it, it's, it's, uh, not a topic that I was expecting, uh, not, not for that, for this, I was expecting it because it came up a few weeks ago, but I was not expecting it to be, um, such, such a debate, I guess, because I, while I do understand the, the financial constraints, I think we've talked about them ad nauseam so far, this evening. I, I don't think privatizing custodians is an option that we should pursue in Duxbury. There is a custodial staff of about twenty people, um, who are members of our community and a critical, critical part of making Duxbury schools safe. I think custodians, you know, in this town, oh, thank you, thank you. Um, custodians in this town, we are a small town and, you know, Mr. Drummy from Chandler School is now since retired. But, you know, the, the kids grow to love and know and trust these folks who are not a disciplinarian to them, um, they are, uh, you know, a Mr. or Mrs. Fixit. They are a hi, how are you? And not every child in Duxbury is coming from a home that is full of love and comfort and joy and safety. And so I, I think, you know, that having that resource available in the school that is not a teacher or, uh, you know, a principal or something like that is important. Um, and I also think for the safety of parents who have their children at school to know that it is not a contracted
Right.
stranger, for lack of a better term, obviously they are vetted through, I'm sure, some, um, you know, safety and protocol, but there's a lot less control when you do that. I, you know, I work in the city of Boston and those folks are in and out of our buildings, day in, day out. Um, not to mention the liability, putting my risk management hat on when that employee slips and falls, well, that school is most certainly gonna be liable, if not, you know.
Right.
Ultimately, they have to go through that process. So I am definitely, um, in favor of, um, keeping our current process the way it is. And I'm also not convinced with the, the money, the finances I have seen that those savings would really come to fruition over the next couple of years, as stated, so.
Great.
That's my, unless I'm convinced otherwise, I'd feel strongly.
All right. Well, thank you.
Welcome.
Yeah, I'm not gonna have all that much difference to say. I'm pretty, uh, I, I think this is one of those things where I understand why we would be brought up from a budgetary standpoint.
Correct.
Because on the face of it, it looks like you're gonna save a hundred thousand dollars the first year. And that might be the case.
Yeah.
It might be the case that you would save money for the first year, but I, uh, but I think down the road, there is absolutely no guarantee that, that those, that those savings would accrue and that's just the budgetary issue.
Right.
Uh, and, and there's, for example, there's no, there's no way of knowing whether these people will unionize in, in five years. And were they to do so, it wouldn't be a public service union, so they could strike. You don't know.
Yeah.
You don't know what's gonna happen five years down the road. So, uh, there's that. There is the entire, uh, involvement. Uh, as Catherine was, was mentioning, said it better than I can, the, the actual involvement of of the, of the custodial staff with the kids, with the teachers, with the school, that's important. Uh, uh, and, and so those are the sort of ephemeral, less obvious, non-budgetary issues. And I also, at a philosophical level, don't think you ought to be undermining organized labor. You know, organized labor is in the business of of seeing to it that people who have these kinds of jobs have decent wages, uh, have decent healthcare, have decent retirement benefits. And I, I don't think we ought to systematically be undermining organized labor.
Great. That's a, a wonderful, uh, responses and I think by, by the response from the audience here that, uh, yeah. We're, we're all in agreement.
Somebody from the union is here.
Yeah.
That, well, great. Um, you've already stated, actually, that the, uh, the state law clearly states that school committee shall establish educational goals and policies for the school and district consistent with the requirements of law and statewide goals and standards established by the Board of Education. What skills and experience do you bring to fulfill this duty?
Yeah, so, uh, uh, here, this is the curriculum question. So, you know, and, and so how it works. And if you haven't been on the DESI website, by the way, it's really worth doing. Uh, it's a, it's a very elaborate website where they, where they lay out the standards for the different subject areas. And then, so what a curriculum is, in a sense, is the conduit, the translation of the state standards into the classroom. Right? And it flows through the assistant superintendent is the person who is titularly in charge of, uh, uh, curriculum. And then there are, are, uh, committees and so forth. So, uh, i- in some senses, I think anybody who's been a teacher, and both of us have.
Yes.
Uh, has the experience of translating, uh, uh, of taking a curriculum and, and using it to, to teach students. Uh, I've also had the experience of designing curricula as well. So I think you would be, uh, pe- people who have had experience in the classroom
Yeah.
uh, understand what it is to take a curriculum and, and take it to the classroom. Uh, um, secondarily, um, I'll just momentarily refer back to what, what you were, uh, implying before,
Mm-hmm.
which is that it is also the role of the school committee to, 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 uh, evaluate whether the curricula that are in use are aligned with this, with the state mandates. So that is also a secondary, you didn't ask that in the question, but that is, uh, uh, also a role of the school committee is to ensure uh, 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 and to push for alignment of curricula and successful alignment of curricula with, with the state standard.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. That's right, same question.
Yeah, sure. So, um, you know, I, I think echoing, echoing what Jed said, I agree. I think it's important that Duxbury work on, and this is in collaboration with the school committee, consistency of the school curriculum, so that that curriculum is, um, being taught in all third grade classes, in all first grade classes. Um, and then I think Duxbury is working on the flexibility, um, back to the special needs a bit, is there may, there may be two lines of curriculum, right? A curriculum that is appropriate for, um, students that they determine are going down one track versus students that are going down another track. So I, I think really focusing on the consistency of uh, delivering the curriculum to all students and then being held accountable to that, which is where the school committee would come in to evaluate that. And I think, again, this balanced scorecard, whether we call it that again, I don't know.
Right.
But some, some mechanism where there is data showing that this is being done so that then the results can really be backed up by this data.
All right.
Yeah.
Excellent.
Mm-hmm.
Wonderful. Next question then is around, uh, actually, it's called diversity, equity, inclusion, but it's really about kind of belonging. I think that's what it, to me anyway. Um, so our, our community has struggled publicly and privately with being seen as a welcoming community. In fact, uh, we, we lost, uh, from the church, the Black Lives Matter, this is the flag, this is the second time this has happened in our community. Um, disappointing. And so, uh, so what is your understanding of, of inclusion? And what do you think Duxbury schools can do to, to enhance and improve on in- inclusion practices?
Sure.
I think.
Do you want me to start?
Yes, yes, yeah.
Yep, so, um, to me, achieving successful inclusion in the schools is when students excel because they're in a welcoming school environment that embraces their families and their caregivers' backgrounds. Students should be seeing themselves in the school, you know, in the hallways and in the classroom. And I think, um, when they are learning school lessons, they the, the lessons need to accommodate various, you know, levels of diversity. And I don't just mean diversity by something you see.
Right.
Diversity can be unseen too, such as your socioeconomic status, your culture, your religion, um, or your sexual orientation. And I think Duxbury has made a concerted effort in providing additional diversity, um, and inclusion training to staff and offering more inclusive activities in collaboration with organizations like Duxbury for All.
Right.
And DSU. Um, but additional training and also a willingness to learn from our community um, and listen to our community as to what inclusion means to them, to me, will support the goal of a fully welcoming community. Um, and finally, although I understand Duxbury is in the process of reviewing it and likely im- implementing the new curriculums, this will be a great opportunity to establish consistent inclusion and instruction, kind of back to my last
Right.
point, um, and content practices across the curriculum. So I would look to the policies currently in place, um, as a school committee member and see if there are any enhancements or revisions to the current policies that would potentially lead to an improvement in our consistency and overall inclusion.
Okay.
Of each member.
Excellent, thank you very much.
Yep.
Jed.
So, uh, uh, I think, uh, uh, Duxbury is inexorably becoming more, uh, diverse. I think that's a great thing. I think we, uh, uh, should all be in favor of that. I think that the, we, we have try, one tries at a philosophical level to, to, to state that we are welcoming and to be as welcoming as we can be. I think that the kind of mistakes that Duxbury has made, uh, are typical of, uh, the kind of mistakes that communities who, which historically aren't diverse uh, typically does make because it's hard for people who, who, who who have been here longer to imagine what it's like to come into a community like this and to imagine what doesn't feel welcoming. So you make the working assumption, for example, uh, not consciously, but unconsciously, that, that, uh, that a family with a di- different socioeconomic background will be able to take advantage of the things in the community in the same way that, that other people can. It's not always the case. Or even we make, let's say we make the assumption, well, why can't these kids participate in an afternoon program? Well, they're home taking care of their siblings in the afternoon, cuz both parents work.
Yeah.
Or even that parents are speaking English at home, which isn't always the case. So, uh, um, uh, it's, uh, becoming a more welcoming community is a complex systemic problem. I will say, I, this is one of the questions in which I think we're, we're, we're doing better. Uh, uh, Caitlin Sheehan is terrific.
She is, yeah.
She's in all the schools and, uh, working hard at this. Uh, uh, you're on the, you're on the committee, are you not?
That's, that's correct, yes. An inclusion committee, yes, right.
Inclusion committee, uh, uh, diversity, equity, inclusion committee. I mean, so obviously the community is at work at this. And I, I, I feel like the, the, um, I feel like the, uh, impetus, uh, the momentum is headed in the right direction.
It's, it's quite amazing what, what we're doing as a town, actually.
Yeah.
Um, and so we're, we're gonna bring it, bring it forward to the, the select board. I think that we made a proclamation about making Duxbury a safer and more welcoming community for all. And it's a lot of things going on. And I think, uh, we're gonna share, share that one, one evening and, uh, you'd be really quite amazed at, uh, how, how extensive and how many people are working, uh, on, on doing just that, uh, kind of recognizing that what feels comfortable for some may not feel comfortable for others and what we do to make it, make a difference, right? Nicely said, both of you.
I think Matt's on that committee too, wouldn't he? Matt can be, yeah.
Right, in, in closing, the, the, the last question, or should we said, the, the last fixed question. Uh, so vision, the school's committee decision on hiring, budget and policy can have long-term impact. What is your vision for Duck, Duxbury Public Schools five years from now? I think.
Me?
I think it's a losing track.
Me, Jed. Okay, so, uh, um, uh, so if you think about education fifty years ago, uh, uh, I mean, fundamentally fifty years ago, we had this sort of body of knowledge that we thought we could impart to our students that would then be useful, uh, uh, we, probably that's more like sixty years ago, that would be useful, uh, to them, uh, in their lives. And so we had this sort of static body of knowledge that we made an effort to transmit to students. Uh, uh, the pace of change, uh, uh, in the last fifty years has accelerated and is now uh, uh, blitzkrieg pace, uh, uh, of change. So the, the concept that, that we, uh, that there was a static body of knowledge to convey to students to, that'll adequately prepare, prepare them for the lives they have is ridiculous. We need, what we need to do is have a dynamic concept of education so that we are preparing students to collaborate, that we are preparing students to cope with change, to adapt to change, to anticipate change. Uh, if we even start to talk about, everybody agrees that artificial intelligence is gonna have a major impact on education. Not a person can tell you how. And, and the idea that we can even imagine that is, is beyond, beyond reckoning.
Right.
So I, I think, uh, to, to, to say to the, what we can anticipate, uh, what we can look forward to in five years is to, is a, an attitude and approach of dynamism to the educational process so that it, so that we do the best job we can to prepare our students for, uh, 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 a, a world that will be rapidly evolving, even more rapidly evolving than it is now. And so there's no definitive answer to the question. You have to, preparing people for change isn't like preparing people with content.
Yeah. Wonderful. Thank you, Catherine.
Good, and it's a big task.
Huge, yes.
That is no easy task. And, you know, to that end, I did not take this decision lightly, as I mentioned. Um, I said no, um, several times and then I really, uh, began thinking about it and have trouble saying no. And, and I recognize the challenge this town has over the next one, three and five years. And so I've committed to giving up some things, um, in my life, not that, that I volunteer for currently to afford me the, the time to really bring our school to the place I think it can be in the next five years or so. Um, so, you know, I'm gonna do my best to be the voice and leader to help our community make informed decisions and continue to deliver the top quality education that we currently enjoy. Um, we will ne- no doubt need to navigate through the next two years, being fiscally responsible and understand the needs of the school community. Um, I envision a plan and an implementation for a more consistent curriculum, as I said, and an evaluation of those school results. I envision a plan and an implementation of enhanced communication from the school committee. And by doing that, we will do those quarterly
Right.
updates of, of sorts and, um, really just have a more, I guess, documented and, um, factual kind of progress of how we move forward. Um, to your point, we will need to evaluate policies and develop a vision for how AI and technology will support and integrate into our school system and for these kids that are growing up in a world that is rapidly evolving and changing. And nobody does have an answer for that today, but you can bet in the next five years, we're gonna be looking back and say, wow, we've really come a long way in our development of our understanding of this. Um, and I, I'd like to look back five years from now and affirm, Duxbury Public Schools has been left in a better place than where it is today, which isn't too darn bad, if you ask me. Think we're in a pretty good spot, but. We can take it to that next.
Wonderful. Thank you very much.
Mm-hmm.
Excellent. So, uh. I think what we'll do, we'll just change it. Rather than closing, are there any questions from from the audience? Are there any questions? From Zoom?
I don't know.
Yeah.
I don't have a question.
Yeah.
Is it okay to just make a comment?
Oh, yeah, no, please.
I just wanted to say how impressed I am with both of you for not sort of coming to the table with a specific agenda. For running on one facet or one, you know, I I I think in in maybe some of the past, you have people that show up because they have. One thing they wanna change or something that really affects their child or their life. And I think that you really have both come to the table with a very uh. Broad view of the town, the community and and every child. So I just wanted to thank you for that.
Yeah. Uh, that was my clothes. You still.
Say it again, say it again.
That that was wonderful. Read that. That's exactly, I I felt exactly the same way. I'm I'm really impressed by by both of you. And it's gonna be really difficult to figure out who I'm gonna vote for. I'm sorry, but it's gonna be difficult. But um, in that case, anything else? Nothing? Oh, great. So, uh, yeah, please.
Um, I have a middle schooler and a high schooler. And. Like any parent with kids in the school, the pandemic has been uh, a part of their experience. Um, we work as a family really closely with our kids to keep them off of phones and technology. Um, I don't think every parent is doing that. Um, and I think parents need more resources to learn how to do that, so that's just a thought. Um, but my question for you is, do you have thoughts on? How the schools need to approach education? Um, in a new way to help kids. Come back to more real life experiences. Um. You know, there's focus on social emotional learning, but how about just learning how to be social and look at somebody in the eye, right? Like, there's some basic things that have um been disrupted. And um, how can you, you know, help a school sort of disrupt in a different direction?
Right. So.
Do you want to go, Catherine? Do you want me to go?
If you have something, go ahead.
Yeah, so, so I I uh, so I have, I have two, two responses. First of all, um, thank you for bringing that up. I actually wrote a book. Uh, called Adrift in the Digital Age, which is about, so yeah, and I didn't pay her to add that question. Uh, uh, but I I have very strong feelings uh, uh, about uh, about parenting in the digital age and uh, the fact that there is no common wisdom. Uh, about how to manage uh, phones and and uh, the other devices that people are on all the time. I think that they are really problematic from a developmental standpoint. I think they've taken everything that was difficult. About being a middle schooler and made it ten times worse.
Hmm.
Especially for girls, but for for guys, the gaming aspect of it. So it 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 it's, it it has been, and in parents, there is no. Uh, there is no common wisdom about how much time, screen time and so forth and so on. So you can't do it the way your parents did it, because your parents didn't have to do it. So uh, it is extraordinarily difficult. I am an advocate at the school level of being quite strict. About uh, cell phones in the classroom. I I've heard people say, well, the teachers should just be interesting enough to compete with the phones. I think that's absurd. The uh, the, it's, that's an impossible task for a teacher. You can't compete with a, they are designed by experts to hold attention. Right? So I I am an advocate of, of, I hope there aren't too many kids listening. I'm I'm an advocate of getting the phones out of the hands of kids in the classroom. I'm an advocate for parents of putting the phones away downstairs. Anybody who sends their kids to bed with a phone and thinks they're going to sleep, you don't know what's going on. I work with teenagers. Uh, it's, it's not been good. For teenagers, and it's not getting any better.
Right.
And I I agree wholeheartedly with you, and we exercise that in our home as well. Um, not perfectly, but to the best of our ability, right? Nobody's perfect. Um, but I I do think, um. As a school committee member, right, putting that hat on, there are absolutely those families and parents that have. The approach that that you would like to see across the school. But there are also those families that feel very strongly they should have access to contact their child when, how, wherever they want. And they don't feel that the school has the right to. Impart the decision to take off your Apple Watch, drop your phone in a basket. And so I I. I don't know the answer as a school committee, how that policy would or would not work, but I know it's not as easy a decision as just saying. My teachers, and this goes back to the consistency thing. I know, I know, my, I have a child in middle school also, and and some teachers say. Here's my basket, put it in here, look at your neighbor, talk to each other, you know, do those things. And other classrooms, I believe. Sometimes the adults in the room are on devices and. It's, I I don't know what the line is, and it's, it's kind of new territory for all of us, but it doesn't mean it's not a very important issue to me.
Right.
Looking into, and then to my point on this accountability of, we're looking into this issue, here are the conversations we had, da, 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 da. Don't know the outcome because it's complicated, but it's, I agree.
Wow, two, two outstanding answers to these questions, right? There's no, no easy. I I'm I'm fortunate, I'm I'm proud of all the two, two lovely ladies. They're in their thirties, and I I'm so glad that they didn't go through this.
Yeah.
Then I'm not a, 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 a parent of a middle schooler or a teenager now. I just.
It's hard.
It's gotta be tough.
Mm-hmm.
Hard.
And it's, you you've brought in some great points.
The pandemic, to your point, that just really.
It didn't help.
Didn't help at all.
Didn't help.
Wonderful. Wow. Any? Any more questions? They've been really good. Um, and nothing from Zoom, so. It's your opportunity for closing remarks. So, uh, Catherine, please. Closing remark, or or you've, you're in a good place.
I'm I'm in a good place. I'll just put it out there. The vote is on March twenty third.
Okay, right, nice.
It's, you know, it it, we won't be sitting in a school committee seat unless people get out and vote. So that's, that's all I would say, and thank you for making this happen. I think it's uncomfortable. Not going to lie to be up here and uh, opining on things and in front of um, a lot of folks, but I I'm. Happy to do it um, for the sake of making our community better.
So you certainly have come across as as a very comfortable person, so.
Thank you.
You've done a great job.
Dang it.
And and and, but but what I like about it is you 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 have a pine, and and you've made your points and and uh, and especially in this last one around. I I was gonna ask you about the consistency, and you you're a great, a great example of the lack of consistency. Uh, so thank you for opining and I'm making your views heard to to all of us here, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I have, I have no closing statement to make either. Uh, um, I I think you did a great job of 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 being a a genial host. Uh, uh.
You're too kind.
Nothing I love to do anymore. Catherine wants to do it, but uh, but it's it's been been fine. Uh, uh, so I'm uh, I'm happy to have been here and thanks for the opportunity.
Great. Well, all I can say, two wonderful candidates, and I wish you all the best of luck.